Sheriff Lee's report.
We should have done that a long time ago.
So. It'd be the five items there from Sheriff Lee to Northern Plain. To remove them from the list today.
Is Al still gonna stay on? He has one, I think we have one thing we kinda need to talk about with under Al's.
Okay, well that will shorten Al's list up anyway.
Okay, any other changes? I oughta look for a motion.
That was a motion.
The motion is second then, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Next we got the minutes from September 5th. Is there any corrections of those?
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the minutes from the September 5, 2024 meeting.
You have a motion to have a second.
Second.
A second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And you have the meeting from September 17th, 2024, is there any corrections of those minutes?
Chairman Franchuk, I would move to approve the September 17th minutes as presented.
You have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Accounts payable, is there any questions accounts payable? No questions, look for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Roll call then Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. And then we got. Got 10 o'clock, if we got scheduled bid opening for the weed truck, bid opening for 10 o'clock.
He was here, right there, front and center.
I have him right here, I'm just trying to get to him. Okay, it looks like we have three bids for the weed control truck. And we did have a spray truck bid form that needed date submitted, had to be returned, we had them return them to the Stark County building where weed is located. Vehicles being sold as is.
First bid is from a Paxton Miller for $7,000. Actually it's Dunn Spring LLC. This second bid is from a Jess Schultz for $1,651. Second one is $1,651. And the first one was $7,000. Third bid is from Chad Stoltz for $2,800. That's it.
That's it.
Okay, I guess I look for a motion to accept the top bid from Dunn Spring or Paxton Miller for $7,000.
Make the motion to accept Paxton Miller's $7,000.
I would second that.
Motion is second. Roll call vote then Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Is there anything for the park board that we need to deal with? To prove all the.
I think their, her bills were actually in our accounts payable, I believe.
Do we have to make a motion on the money that was spent for the?
Oh, the.
The $10,000?
So I have to make that motion again, see if I can remember it. Chairman Franchuk, I would move that we allocate $10,000 from the County Park Special Funds Project Fund for conceptual drawings towards fairgrounds, 4H facilities at Stark County Fairgrounds.
Okay, you have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call then, Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next we have one. Recognition of years of service, that's for county recorder Kim Kazian.
Ten years with the county.
Okay, next we have the introduction of IT Coordinator.
Yeah, you're gonna have to come up.
You have to come up.
I would like to introduce Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director, Jeremiah Kirkpatrick, our new IT Coordinator, started last Monday. And we've been busy going around, visiting all the departments and getting a lay of all the buildings, so.
Public speaking wasn't part of your job description, so don't worry about it, it's all good.
No, it wasn't. Hello, glad to be aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, have you met all the commissioners?
Um, most of you I have, there's a couple I haven't.
And you're downstairs?
Yes.
Okay, well, make sure we navigate down there and see your, see your spread as to say.
I'm down in the proverbial IT dungeon.
Okay.
All I need is a hoodie and I'm good to go.
Alright. So, how's things going so far?
Uh, good.
Yeah?
Done a lot looking around and seeing what you got and putting together an improvement sheet for you, so.
So, when did you start?
Last Monday.
Okay.
And you're used to the type of weather we have here, where'd you come from?
Beulah.
Beulah, Wilson before that.
I guess you're used to it, alright, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, by the way, to harass you a little bit, but.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Next to do the Dickinson Park and Parks Recreation, Benjamin Ray. Thanks for waiting so long.
Looks like we're right on time, actually.
Yep.
Well, I was glad that you moved those five items off the agenda, that was very nice of you. Benjamin Ray, Executive Director Dickinson Parks and Recreation, thanks for having me. Each year, the North Dakota Recreation and Parks Association, NDRPA, honors an agency or organization that has developed a successful partnership to create a project or program that benefits the community, region, or state, and increases awareness of the importance of park, recreation, and leisure services in the quality of life. This year, the NDRPA selected Dickinson State University Sanford Sports Complex as the partnership award winner. With the DSU Heritage Foundation leading the way in fundraising efforts and support from a variety of private and public donations, this project stands as a testament to the value of community partnerships. Since the facility opened last year, it has hosted over 100,000 visitors. In fact, I was told just as I was sitting there, that in the month of May alone this year, there was over 26,000 visitors to the facility. Where the facility hosted state and collegiate tournaments. Facilities such as these are important to our local residents, for recreation, and are crucial drivers of economic impact to our region. On behalf of the North Dakota Recreations and Parks Association, I present this plaque of appreciation to the Stark County Commission for your support and contributions to this project. Thank you very much for, for supporting this project. Love to present this to you, maybe get a picture, maybe have Kyle and Kristen join us for. I don't know what the normal protocol is in the county commission for this, so.
We don't win a lot of awards.
No.
We get a lot of participation ribbons, but.
Sounds like a.
Can I photobomb it?
I didn't think you liked sitting that close to them. Thank you very much.
Yep.
We can't, we can't applaud for ourselves, so. Everybody else here can clap for us right now if you really want to. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next to do the Dickinson Ambulance Asset Purchase Agreement.
Is somebody gonna run the PowerPoint? Perfect. I'll just tell you next when I'm ready. Alrighty. Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, I'm before you this morning to request your signature on the purchase agreement, we finally reached that point. It has been signed by the city and from my understanding, you know, once you guys sign it, it'll move on to the owner, which he has agreed to what we're presenting. So, the, the purchase agreement is for their assets and not the business, so the purchase price will be $900,027,255. There will be $50,000 earnest money paid at the time of signature. And then the balance of the purchase will be paid when we officially take on the ambulance service on June 30th, 2025. There's $425,000 in vehicles, 445 and some change for equipment, and then $57,000 for consumable and medical supplies, which does include some medications and stuff like that. So here's the breakdown of the vehicle assets, so we have a 2022 Ford Horton for $175,000, a 2021 Ford Horton for $130, a 2019 Ford Horton for $80,000, and then the Ford AUV for $28,000, and then a 2008 GMC UConn for 12. Some of the equipment that we're getting are the radios and some additional radio equipment, some was removed because of it not being compatible with the new system, we were able to negotiate some of that out of the contract. Some vehicle computers, which are iPads, which we can bring over when we make the transition, it's just switching them over to our account. A COVID containment unit, ambulance cots and stair chairs, the ambulance cots are the, most of them are the newer version that are self-loading, so it really helps with paramedic safety. Some defibrillators and ventilators, and then various other medical equipment. And then the consumables, we don't have a itemized breakdown, but this is what we'll get when we, we do get there, there'll be 57,000 worth of different bandages, gauze, and other medical supplies. So some of the excluded assets, we cannot use the name Dickinson Area Ambulance, which we did not plan on using. We will not be taking on any of their accounts receivable builder on the closing date. We will not be taking on their, their building, or their office furniture and some other office equipment. And like I said, we did pull out those VHF pagers out of there because they're not compatible with the new system at all. And then their brand new Type 2 Transit Ambulance, I think that you've probably seen running around the van style, that does not come over, that is a lease that they have that will not be included in the purchase price. It's a little tight in there. So no assumption of liabilities prior to the closing date, so obviously, once we sign, then we take on any liability after that point, nothing prior to that. And then we're not taking on any of their contracts or permits prior to the closing date. This is strictly for the purchase of the asset, so with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you have.
So, once we sign this, we're not really taken over, but we're taken over, or how does that work?
Commissioner Marsh, once, once we sign it, we're essentially agreeing to, to purchase it on that closing date that we have listed. Part of the reason we're doing it so early is we have to start the process of getting that ALS license. We've already kind of started that, alls we're waiting on now is the purchase agreement, a signed purchase agreement, and the state will issue a conditional and provisional ALS license, so then we can start the process of, of working on getting our national provider license, so we can start billing on day one. We have to apply with Medicaid and Medicare and get their approval, and we have to have all that in place before we can actually start that process, so we're hoping to have everything done, so when we take over, we can start billing for services.
Closing date is when?
June 30th of '25 is when they will officially cease operation and we take over.
Good job. So we've seen this contract before, it's just there's, there's two material changes, it's the purchase price has actually come down.
Come down, yes sir.
Just a touch, and then we've actually moved the closing date to June 30th.
Yeah.
Versus January 1, '26.
Yes.
Six months, yep.
Yeah, so I, I know we did cut the six months off our original go-live date, but this was at the request of the seller, lines up with his budget year, and there are some concerns with.
I think it's a good move.
Yeah, so, we've, we've made adjustments on our end, we have opened up a lot of the positions, we are seeing a good number of applicants, we actually, this week, will be interviewing our first round of paramedics. We did end up with six applicants for that, just advertising locally, we will be doing a national push after this week. We ended up with, I think, last I looked, 26 applicants for firefighter EMT, so we did make an offer out to an EMS educator this week, so we're, we're starting to fill the positions. You know, when, when we do start making offers, especially for any existing ambulance staff, it will be conditional with a start date of June 30th, so they, they wanted a little bit of peace of mind and, and having some type of idea whether they were gonna have a job or not, so we opened them up a little earlier, which ended up working out in our favor with the move up of the, the go-live date.
I'd make a motion that we authorize our chairperson to Commissioner Franchuk to sign the purchase agreement on behalf of the Stark County Commission. I'd second.
Actually, there's three contracts, assigned asset purchase agreement, a non-compete.
Okay.
And a non-solicitation agreement, and the bill of sale, SASS, or assignment and assumption agreement.
Change my motion, let you sign it, all the papers in front of you.
Okay.
For, for this purchase agreement.
Motion then, you have a second.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
And we will be coming back to you guys quarterly to kind of give you some updates, and then at the point we go live, we can either move that up and kind of meet with you a little more frequently to kind of give you updates where we're at, but for now, probably on a quarterly basis, just to keep you in the loop of where we're at in terms of purchasing ambulances, where we're at with staffing, just for your peace of mind. So, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Amanda, is that something, we should probably did a roll call on it, or not?
Um, there's money involved, right, on the purchase agreement, so, yeah, I would probably.
Did we already approve that money? The sale, the money, the purchase. Now the purchase agreement, we.
Are you just signing, you guys have already approved the money?
Correct.
I mean, it doesn't matter one way or the other.
Yeah.
If you guys have already approved the money, if it makes you feel better, then you can do it, a roll call, but I think you're fine. If you've already approved the money.
Yeah, let's do a roll call just to cover ourselves in, roll call then. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Did you get that, Lana? Okay.
Okay, next we have the Dickinson Library Director Introduction.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Lisa Anni, and I am here to, on behalf of the Dickinson Area Library Board to introduce our newly hired, well, late February, hired library director, Ian Anguano. I, I made it a mess, but I tried.
You have to correct her.
Yeah.
It's Anguano, and good morning Commissioners, it's so nice to finally be able to put some faces to names. While I am new to the directorship here at the Dickinson Area Public Library, I am not new to Dickinson. Prior to my time up in McKenzie County, where I was their library director, I was the administrative support librarian here in Dickinson for about seven years, and prior to that, I was a library page, so I've kind of run the gamut there. We've been facing some challenges here at the Dickinson Area Public Library over the last few years, and one of our big failures, I felt, was a lack of communication from my chair. To that end, I'm here today to talk to you a little bit, and hopefully learn what your expectations and goals are for the library and our services to Stark County. Also to talk to you a little bit about some of the things we've done to address that, not just here with Stark County, but for all of our service areas. One of our big pushes in that area of communication and getting input from everybody who contributes to the library in terms of tax dollars was getting appointees from each of our counties. So the library board now has, for the first time, representatives from Slope and Billings County, as well as Stark County. To my knowledge, prior to that, we've never had any representation from anyone but the city commission, so it's a small step, but it's a first step. And so I'm not just talking at you, if you have questions for me or concerns, I would love to hear them, even if not here, whenever you have the chance to present them.
Okay, any questions?
I've, I've been working with Ian for several months now, and I really like the direction that he is moving our library into.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Steve's not here. Let's go ahead with the.
I guess, do you have any questions for us?
Alright, I kind of mixed it into my little speech there, but I would love to hear your goals and expectations for the.
Okay, that's one of your questions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Put us back on the spot.
You're the people I need to hear from.
Like I said, I've been working with him, I like the direction that we seem to be moving. Changes in the way displays are set up, changes in the whole operations, I mean, you have new, new leadership, so a lot of changes are going on, you've got some remodeling projects happening and.
It is the new mobile library, is that being, operating now, or is that still being?
So, the new bookmobile will be in operation this coming February, it is being built and it is on track, so it will soon be in service. I'm very excited to get it out there, I know particularly some of our stops will be happy to have access to things like the wheelchair lift, particularly where we're going out to the abbey. Some of the sisters do need that extra bit of assistance, so we're excited to be able to provide it and give them all of the service they can expect from us, rather than having to jimmy rig a solution.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. We'll go to emergency management, I guess, and Steve's not here.
Do we need to go back to county?
Yeah, Al Heiser.
We need to do the road report yet.
I'm sorry, skipped over you there.
I'm gonna be real quick here, there's one thing that Jeremy mentioned, on the 22nd Tuesday at the County Commission Event, and our meeting with the DOT is at 2 o'clock. So you want me to make 2 o'clock on the 22nd?
That's Tuesday or Monday?
Tuesday.
Because I think they were, part of the deal was they were gonna try to get him shut down, the DOT during the at-large meetings, because in the past, you know, Dean and Bernie would have to bail out of the County Commission Association meeting to go to that, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
To be honest with you.
22nd, and then another item is Amanda had talked about, we got the issue with that fence on the section line, do we want to get an official survey? I mean, that's your primary recommendation, so maybe she can speak in a little bit.
Well, my understanding is that the section line, or Al says the section lines may be a little confusing as to where it's at. And so, if we're going to be sending letters to a property owner to tell him to move his fence, or if he doesn't, then there will be, you know, the county will come in and move it for him, we, we better make sure that he's actually in the county's right of way, so. That's, I guess, my suggestion.
Estimated between 5 and 1,500, I would think the people that on the south side probably had a survey, so there's got to be some survey markers close by, and that's the reason why the variance, if you can't find the section line, Courtney might have to go look for it.
I would authorize the Road Department to engage the location of the corner so that we can make that determination.
I would second that.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Roll call then, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
One last thing, Dean, did you sign that new reimbursement from the DOT for 5.5 million, it's, it's been approved, so was that sent in?
I haven't seen it, no.
Okay, I think we've got it approved now, so we'll get it just the way it gets sent in.
See, I, I don't think I've seen it yet, have I?
Yeah, we just got it approved here yesterday, so it's gonna go to DOT Finance, so but I think we got to sign that paper like you signed last time. I'll get it to you.
Okay. And then to piggyback off what Al said, in the event that he is in the right of way, we'll go about it in the same process that we did with Palm Beach Road, so in the, in the event that we have that information before the next commission meeting, if the commission wants, I'd like you guys to approve me then, sending a letter telling him he needs to move his fence as opposed to, you know, waiting until November, and then doing it then, so.
So I'd make a motion that if he is in the right of way, that Amanda has the authorization to send a letter.
I'll second.
A motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, Lena. Steve's here, okay, Steve, you want to do the planning and zoning?
Good morning Commissioners, Steve Josephson, County Planner, you have before you a request by Cody Kuntz to rezone 5.0. You have before you a request by Cody Kuntz to rezone 5.06 acres from agriculture to rural residential. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Chairman Franchek, I would move to approve application RZ 04-24, application by Cody Kuntz, rezoning from agricultural to rural residential on a property located in tract one, in the south half, in the southeast of Section 2, township 137 North, range 96 West.
I'd second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, I'll notify the applicant after.
Thank you. Okay.
Morning, Commissioners. Stark County Emergency Manager, Ducker. I'm struggling this morning, I apologize. All right. Stark County Community lifelines are good. For September, the coals, we had 59, saw a little increase on the brush fires. Everything else stayed fairly low. We did go up to 42 reported wildfires, and then the fire that occurred yesterday burned around 640 acres. So, we are up to 715 acres burned, that has been our largest fire of the year. That would have been Dickinson Rural, Gladstone, and then they requested mutual aid from New England Fire and Regent Fire, so quite a large fire yesterday. And then Al actually came out with the county trucks to assist, so we really appreciated that. We are in critical fire conditions today with the wind and the dry conditions. We could see increased potential for large fires, so just a reminder to those in the county to be cautious and respect the burn restrictions. The month of October is Fire Prevention Week, or Fire Prevention Month, depending on how long we keep it going, but this year's theme is smoke alarms, make them work for you. So, some facts about, or some little tidbits about fire, uh, smoke detectors. Three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with no smoke detectors or working smoke detectors. Fire deaths in home occur more often at night, from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM when people are sleeping. And installing a smoke alarm in your house increases your chance of survival by 82%. The recommendation is one smoke alarm per level and one in every bedroom, a carbon monoxide alarm on every level in every bedroom, and a fire extinguisher on every level, plus your kitchen and the garage. It's important to have smoke alarms because early detection could really save your life. To really showcase that, we have what's called the legacy room versus the modern room. They set two fires in two rooms. The legacy room is the old style of furniture, so the natural, the cotton, whereas the modern room is more of the synthetic furnitures. So, this is at 10 seconds, they've lit a fire. You can kind of see it on the legacy room there on the left, you can see a little bit of a fire by the pillow. They've kind of set them in the same areas. Two minutes, we've already seen the modern room, the fire going up the curtains, the legacy room has barely started to grow. Three minutes, we're seeing the fire really increasing in that modern room. That smoke level is what we call thermal layering, so all the heat is being pushed down, and it's heating that entire room. Three minutes and 40 seconds, we have what's called flashover, so everything in that room has completely ignited. The legacy room is starting to crawl up the curtains. And then 26 minutes later, the legacy room has finally flashed over, so. We're having less, people have less and less time to get out of a home with the synthetics that we have now. So, knowing when a fire starts early is really important, and getting out and saving yourself, so. The county, the emergency services, we work with the Red Cross. So, if you have no smoke detectors in your home, we can actually get you smoke detectors and install them for you. So, you can call my office and request that. Or if you are within the city of Dickinson, the Dickinson Fire Department also offers free smoke detectors. Just call and ask, my recommendation is to ask for Todd O'Donnell, he's with the Fire Prevention Office. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
I do have a comment. The, this does, nice presentation, thank you, but I just wanted to just touch on yesterday, we met as a, the initial meeting for the PSCAC was yesterday?
Yep, we had that initial meeting for that Public Safety Advisory Board that we kind of put together with dispatch, and then that second one with, where we included some of the ambulance stuff. So, we had the first one yesterday, I think it went really well. We brought up some good things that I think we can approve upon as a group with dispatch, and just things to work towards, to help out the emergency services.
I was very encouraged by what I saw. I mean, you have basically all the first responders and in the room, and communicating. I think it was initially, everyone was a little tight, but, and I know that there's definitely things that they can work out, but I thought that the communication was good. Sheriff Lee was there, he had some input. So, overall, I think it's, the goal is to increase communication across all the entities, and I thought it was really good.
Yeah, work together, and then just kind of educate each other on like the process. I did a, I provided some information on how the 911 fees work, how we collect them, how we distribute them, distribute them, and then what the state, their expenditure guidelines are, so just trying to educate the group so that if they were ever asked questions, that they could provide a little bit more input themselves.
I know initially, there was some hesitancy on some of the groups to join or even be a part of this, but I think ultimately, it's gonna be really good things.
Yeah, I think so too. I think, I think we have some good things going forward, or good plans. Lieutenant Handel presented some of the plans they have for some projects they're working on, and they all sound great, so I think, I think we're gonna have a really good dispatch center.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks to the fire departments yesterday, controlling that fire, that had been in miserable conditions.
So, I got one more thing.
You have the Perry.
She has another item.
Yep, I have the Perry Weather contract. I always throw my off, I apologize. I should just start emailing in my presentation. So, this is for the Perry Weather, last commission meeting, my assistant, Brad Banyai, he presented on the weather stations we were hoping to put kind of throughout the county. We talked with Perry Weather, and they were offering us a deal to send them out early with the, taking off the cost of the shipping, and then retroactively just charging us for the remainder of the year. I think that came to 3,000. I don't remember. It was, they were charging us around 3,000 something for the remainder of the year to get those out to us and get that contract going.
Is that, so 3,000 to 50?
Yep, that would be for this year, and then going, starting into the new year, we would be on that regular contract price of the 11,000. And this is for a three-year contract. We think three years would kind of give us a good timeframe to figure out if this is worth continuing. I'm just looking for approval or questions.
Any questions? I'd look for a motion, and.
So, is this 24 expenditure you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, the startup cost of that 3,200, and then the next year, that 11,000 would be.
Next year's would be next year's budget.
Yep, the next year would be the next year.
And I guess I'm just looking at that, because I think at the last meeting, we authorized to put it into next year's budget, I'm just trying.
The 12,000 we did, but not the 3,000 for.
Oh, gosh.
And I have.
It's early.
Yep.
Okay, the early buy-in, okay.
Yeah, and I have some extra money in my budget where I can pull that 3,000 from, so I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be going over.
I think the biggest thing with Elena's was the shipping. So, they were gonna charge us a crazy amount of shipping, so we're pretty much just finishing out the year.
And free shipping.
For free.
Saving the shipping, and then whatever, you know, hopefully putting some of that towards like an installation fee, if, you know. We're hoping to kind of, you know, get it worked out on our own without a big cost, but.
Well, since the first, the second part is already included in your budget, I would make the motion that we spend the extra 3,000, what was it, $250, or whatever it was, for the early purchase.
I'm not exactly sure where they have that three, because I see two different 3,000 numbers, Elena. I don't know.
I don't have them from.
If it's, I don't know if it's that one, or if it's this one.
So, we're gonna be picking up three units total, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, this is what you're looking at, but then what's this?
Fortunately, I didn't bring that contract in front of me.
Come and look at her.
Well, it just didn't print well, like it's very light, but here, maybe you can.
I think they're giving us a discount.
So, it's 3250 a year, right? 3,250 a year?
No, what it.
And then over a three-year period, it's at 11,250?
That 3,250 is retroactively for this year, and then it picks up to 11,000.
For the year.
For every year.
Okay.
I know, it's kind of a weird laid-out contract. So, looking at, are you talking, you were looking at the 3,750?
Yeah, what's the amount for this year?
3,250, they're giving us a $500 discount for the three-year contract.
Oh, I got you.
So, 3,250?
Yes.
And then nothing for shipping?
Nothing for shipping, that's correct. MHA Nation's actually ordering a bunch of these, so they were gonna include ours in with them, to.
Who's ordering them? So, they're paying our shipping?
MHA Nation.
Okay.
Is that just for one unit? We're gonna take one unit for 2024?
We're gonna take all three.
Okay.
For free shipping, we're taking all three, right?
No, it says two here.
The shipping was a lot.
Says it's two, right?
Well, the first sheet says one, there's one there, okay.
Okay, there's three.
Yeah, it's, it's a weirdly laid out purchase agreement.
It didn't scan well.
No, it did not. There'll be some feedback, I give them, work on your contracts.
Oh, so I see, it says shipping per unit is normally $350 per unit to ship.
Okay, so then do we have a motion here, then?
Yes, you do.
Okay, there are a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second? Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Clares.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we got delinquent property sale pricing.
So, you guys would have got your sheets I gave to you. You should have two of them. You should have one with properties that we already have, and then you have the new ones that we took back, will be taking back. They do have until 5:00 today to pay, and, but All Around Painting did pay at 9:00 AM this morning, so you can take them off your list.
Which one?
All Around Painting. And make sure you're going off the copies I gave you, because we had some pay at 4:00 yesterday. And then the ones that are left, we're pretty positive we're getting all those other ones back. They don't have any intention of paying. So, my recommendation was here, you have minimum sales prices set by the tax directors, basically just the minimum sales price of what the value would be in our tax system. My recommended sales price is basically covering all the taxes and everything owed to the county. For a minimum sales price, that's what my recommendations are. If they go to auction, which they would, and the people want to bid up, they absolutely can. I'm just, I just want, I want to recoup our taxes, I don't want to, I'm not looking to make profit on anything, so, because we can't make profit, so that's where those recommendation prices are.
So, other than the three or four holding ponds and drain ditches, we're underwater on those, and 10 bucks is fine for me. If someone wants to own or drain each ditch and develop a fishing pond or something, that's fine. But we did set a price, and you and I visited about this a little bit, Karen. We did set a price like two months ago on the Richardson one. I'm wondering if we shouldn't try to hold that for a little bit, and we can always make that adjustment. There is no provision that doesn't allow us to make a, an adjustment to that price. I mean, I'm not gonna get hung up on it, but we did, you know, go to the 30,000 on the Richardson ones. All the others, I'm fine with.
And then the cities were also, you know, like City of Bellfield would like, I know would like the Karen Potter House back, that is currently at 32,000. That's my recommended set price, because there's like 20-some, high twenties, in a lien against it by the city for water. And so, they would actually like that property back, so I would like to offer these properties back to the cities. And I kind of put in the address line, if you see where it doesn't have an actual address, but then there's a city beside it, that's because it is like in the city of Dickinson, or we have one in Taylor, Gladstone has one, Bellfield has one, two, Richardson has one. I would like go back into the process of offering these properties back to the cities, if they're willing to take them.
The one property.
Offer them to the city, just to give them to the cities without them paying?
We usually, I think, offer them for like a dollar, because then it just goes back to the city, and then they have to, they can deal with the delinquent property.
How do you link with taxes just disappear at that point, and it's just, we get a dollar or whatever?
So, we would abate out what's left. Most of the taxes that are on these properties, if they're in that city, are the city's own taxes or special assessments.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, so they get to deal with their own, right? And then we're just, we have to bait out our portion that would have been county, but you're not gonna recoup. I mean, if you're offering them back to the cities for a dollar, let's say Dickinson, we send a whole list, all these are a dollar, you know, we're looking at selling them for $10 anyways. So, I would just rather give them back to the cities if we can.
Ryan Dale Cattermas, that's in the city of Lefler, is it?
Um, I put the county, because I didn't think it was in the actual city, is it?
It's in Lefler, yep.
Yep.
Well, Lefler is not an actual city.
They're not organized.
They are a village.
So, we get offered that too, then?
Well, ourselves, that's why it says county. But we can put those ones, you know, those ones obviously aren't gonna be offered back, right? We have a couple that are county. I think we have one, two, two that are county, so.
So, if you offer it back to the city of Bellfield, giving it back to the city of Bellfield, basically?
For a dollar, yes.
For the dollar.
Yep, because there has to be some sort of like exchange, so, yes, we are pretty much giving it back to them. And then they deal with anything as far as tearing down, or any sort of their own taxes owed, everything else like that, and we're not just sitting on properties, so.
So, has the, I believe, just for clarification, I believe the city's already rejected our overture to give back those retention pond lots previously in previous years?
I think if you only offer the city of Dickinson junk, they're probably gonna reject it.
I don't know if there's ever been official offer to them, I haven't recall.
But I think if you offer them some that aren't retention ponds.
You know, that the property we have now at 523 Dupont Street, this binder lot is right north of that, so that's, that's a half a lot, so.
Yeah, that's the problem, is that that lot only works for one person, because of the way the current building code is. But that's fine, I'm okay with all this, but I would like.
I'd like to put it in a bundle and offer it to them, like, here you go, you get the whole shebang, so you get one good one, and maybe two retention ponds.
Four retention ponds.
Well, I was sugarcoating it.
Four, there's three.
Well, there's two drainage ditches, two retention ponds, all kind of the same stuff. What's the thoughts, let's, I'll make a motion, but what's the thoughts on Richardson, guys? We dropped it to 30 like two months ago, do we want to go to the 20 and get rid of it, or? I mean, we have.
I did receive feedback on the 30, so we'd put it at, well, I think 29, right? So, 29, I contacted the people that were interested in it and moving it to 29 in the first place. When I told them 29, that they don't, they don't want it for 29, that's why we didn't have another public hearing, because they don't want it anyways, so you might as well set it at this. When I told them twenty-nine, that they don't, they don't want it for twenty-nine, that's why we didn't have another public hearing, because they don't want it anyways, so you might as well set it at this meeting. But now, I think if you put it up for twenty, or what have you, maybe we would actually sell it.
I, I, I think the, the only thing is with, with the twenty-nine to the couple that was here, I think they're, uh, they have, uh, kind of owned information that a lot of people may not have, so, but, Al, refresh us, we're into that demo for.
Yeah, it was twenty-plus.
Well, then the, then the landfill charge was over that, so, if we, if we're interested in recouping some of that, um, whether we own this for thirty days or a year.
The Richardson guy's been doing a good job, I'm probably bad at it, they're keeping the weeds down on it, so.
So, I'm, I'm open to whatever, but I, I, I think we owe it to try to recoup some of that.
Your proposal is to just to give everything else back to the cities besides the Richardson property?
Offer it to the cities, well, we'll retain the county ones.
Yeah, so we'll be left with two counties. I guess what I'm looking for is if you guys wanna accept my recommended sales prices, just set minimum prices, so that we can go to get these on to auction, but then the cities actually get, we send out letters.
Simultaneously, we could set.
We send out letters to the cities first, they get kind of first, they get first dibs on them.
Yep.
Yep.
And that lot there, I was just by it, what, last week, it looks really good, I mean.
Which, the one, the?
The, uh, the Richardson one.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's ready to go and be built on.
Yeah, it, so, it, it depends on how deep we wanna get into the weeds with this, so. If not out, I'll, uh, I don't know.
Looking to make a motion over there.
I'm looking, yes. I, I was hoping to get some feedback on what we wanna do with, with Richardson, if not, I'll lump them all together.
Well, I mean, if we wanted, offer to the couple that was here, but I don't know if that's right, so would you have to?
Well, they said no to twenty-nine thousand.
I know, so if we wanted, I mean, are we looking at this twenty thousand, or you wanna leave it at the twenty-nine thousand?
Well, I don't, yeah.
I would be in favor of, you know, giving, offering the, the city properties, the city property, or the cities, the city properties, but I would, I'd be in favor of retaining the Richardson property for, at thirty thousand dollars for some time.
It's twenty-nine.
Or twenty-nine thousand, um, for some time, um, down the road, just for, because I think we have some sunk costs there, man, it's, it's, it's a viable piece of property that could potentially be sold.
Cost on maintaining and recouping the weeds or something.
Yeah, but, but at least we're trying to recoup the thirty or forty, so.
Some attempt.
I'll move that we take, uh, uh, all the auditor price recommendation sales prices, uh, uh, with the exception of the Richardson property, to adjust that to twenty-nine thousand, and offer simultaneously to the various cities for the one dollar, uh, that are affected.
I'd second that.
Except for Richardson.
Except for Richardson.
Except for that Richardson.
And six months from now, that may change my mind, but right now, I'd like to recoup our costs.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, then Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Clers.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, motion carried. Okay, next we do the election cabinets quote.
So I had originally put this in your preliminary budget, under capital improvements, and, you know, I had earmarked like forty thousand dollars, because I had no idea what this is gonna cost. Well, I got my quote back, and it's fourteen thousand eight fifteen. So, I would like them to get going on installing them in December, so we can put our election equipment and stuff away. At, at least I hope to God we can put it away in December. Um, so, I'm just looking forward to, I took it off your guys' budget that you're gonna go over, um, looking for approval to have this set up.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the expenditure from, uh, for the election cabinets for fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty, did you say?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand eight fifty, okay.
Fourteen thousand eight fifteen.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, easy for me to say. I would second that.
Where, where are we taking it from, or is it?
Capital improvements.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Commissioner Clers.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes, aye, motion carried. Okay, did I miss anything else besides the budget?
Nope.
Okay, time to go down to the county budget approval for two thousand twenty-five. Guess we pretty much went through it, then last on the September seventeenth, is there anything changed we wanna look at here, or we can move forward in approving?
There's, there's a few things, I think after our last meeting, uh, we discussed about merit raises, uh, one point five.
So, ju- just so the commission knows, what I took from your last meeting, and I put into your budgets, okay? So if you look at a department, we'll use, we'll use Road, for example, because you'll see it right away. You'll see merit amount, right, it's highlighted in green, so, his bucket of that one point five percent is twenty-six thousand one twenty-four sixteen. His salaries that I have in there for his employees is the one point five percent, so he just needs to take that twenty-six thousand one twenty-four sixteen and disperse it between those employees, so you know when you're approving this, that bucket is still there, it is included in your totals, it just has not been dispersed.
Okay, and, and the reason I say this, there's no guidance on merit yet, right, and we're just, uh, we brought this up last meeting about the merit in one point five. Uh, the August meeting, we also brought up, uh, a range of zero percent, one point five percent, and three percent. And, uh, we didn't stick with that either. Uh, we have several, uh, wages that went up significantly higher than that. And so, we have some department heads, uh, making two percent and some making seven percent. I think our last meeting we had last month probably wasn't our best performance, I think maybe they probably should have some discussion on that.
I would agree with you, Commissioner White. Um, actually, all the way down to one point five percent.
Yeah, so I think we were all over the board, and, and, um, I, I think that what, what we discovered as a commission, and it's fair, this is a, this is our hardest job, and to do this and walk out of here, feel good about it, and feel like everybody got a fair shake, is, uh, difficult with the current system that we have, because we don't have a system. I, uh, spent way too much time thinking about this, um, I could tell, and, uh, it didn't, uh, I didn't lose sleep necessarily over the whole deal, but I, like I said, I think we've heard from some of the, uh, employees, uh, through the process in the last few weeks, and, so, and, and I struggled, uh, for the last week, since our September, when was our, was it September seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yes.
Yeah, we had our seventeenth meeting, and, um, like I said, do we, first of all, I think that we need to establish that we, I think, as a commission, we, we value our employees. It's important that they feel that value. Um, I know that pay raise isn't necessarily, it doesn't always show that pay, that value that, that we, that we have for them, but, um, at the same time, and we're all in public service here, so, um, it's hard for us to compare what we're doing here to the private sector. So I did come up with some thoughts, I'm not sure, I, I mean, I don't have my helmet on, so I don't wanna get things tossed at me here, but I do have some thoughts on, uh, and possibly a system going forward to make it easier on this commission, uh, that we can have some guidelines. And like I said, i- it's simply a proposal, um, that I would like to forward and open up a discussion about. So if you're willing to listen to that, I would, I would start in some discussions with other entities, political subs, um, you know, there's always this talk about step and grade, pay, um, I'm sure there's some folks that are not in favor of that, but, um, I would propose that we would start this process over and, and use a, and use, uh, a framework, um, and it's all, it's up for the rest of you to decide whether this is fair or not, but, in thinking about it, I would like to start with putting some value on our crime fighters, our state's attorney and our law enforcement, um, and start with, uh, state's attorney at, they had proposed a five percent, um, raise, and I would be in favor of that, at five percent with no COLA, and that just includes state's attorneys, the three state's attorneys that are there, and, uh, the, the remainder of the employees would fall into the employees level.
No merit, right?
No merit. Law enforcement, once again, trying to show some appreciation for the hard job that they have, and put them up there, um, in, into a category, uh, I'll call them our crime fighters. Law enforcement would be, uh, a two percent COLA, and I would actually say that that would be across the, the board. Two percent COLA for all employees, besides the state's attorney, okay, um, and a two-point-five percent merit pay to the, um, law enforcement officers, and I would, uh, tag that towards a years of service. So, years of service, uh, zero to five years, one percent, six to ten, one point five, eleven to five, eleven to fifteen, two percent, sixteen to twenty, twenty, two-point-five percent. So the maximum that any employee in the law enforcement could get this year would be four-point-five percent. Sheriff, the sheriff, we would max, of course, you would get the, the COLA, and the sheriff's max would be two-point-five percent, that would be obviously set by this county commission. All other departments, I would propose the two percent COLA again, and once again, um, base the merit on years of service, uh, for a total of, for years one through five, a point five percent, six through ten, one percent, eleven through fifteen, one point five percent, sixteen through twenty plus, two percent. So the maximum the employees could earn is four percent. And that's all I have, it's a little bit of a framework, I know it's not gonna be popular, but I, I, I feel like the, the, one thing that I have, basically my ears were tuned into immediately when I took this position as a county commissioner, was equity is very important across the county, and, um, I think this provides some equity, and also gives some, uh, places some importance on our crime fighters, and puts them in a different tier, obviously the state's attorney, with their, uh, specialized degrees that they need to have, um, not anybody can do that job. And law enforcement, the same way, I mean, the risks involved, uh, that they have, and they also have specialized training as well. So, I would just go from there for discussion purposes.
And I, and I like that, too, I know we just discussed merit, uh, but we don't have nothing in, written for merit yet, in place, so, uh, for a stepping stone for this year, I think I would agree.
So, that, the road department also though has specialized training in a lot of ways, not maybe to the extent this law enforcement. When there's blizzards out there, they are putting their selves out there to make sure law enforcement and ambulances can get to where they need to go. I mean.
And like I said, this is a, just a, you know.
And that's, that's where my discussion's at.
Quick, quick framework here, but I think that, we, I mean, we have to try to somehow make this easier on ourselves here, in trying to take the emotions.
I like what you laid out.
This type of thing is, is, because, I, I, you know, um, so, it's out there, and poke holes, I'm, I'm willing for you guys to poke holes all over this thing, so just to tap at it. Is this just for employees or department heads? Where, where are we at? So, um, the non-law enforcement employees get a two percent COLA plus years of service bump, whatever that is, right? Okay, um, but I guess I don't know that, and, and, you've thought about it, I just, I'm receiving it, so I'm just wondering, uh, how we're handling the, the, uh, department heads, are they all at two percent then, or?
I believe, yeah, I think that that's fair to start with a two percent COLA, I mean, with the.
So they fall into the employee ca- category as well?
Yeah, and that's up for discussion, I mean, that's totally up for discussion, but I think the employees, and, 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 maybe we should carve out department heads, and, and that should be a category as well, we've put them in leadership positions here. Like I said, I was trying to create a tier, like I said, I placed some importance, um, um, on law enforcement, um, but I'm not trying to minimize the, the role that anyone else has in this county as well.
Or either, any, I don't believe any department heads more, department is more important than the other, though, either.
Okay, for, for law enforcement, um, with a maximum merit of two-point-five percent, I have it broke out, zero to five, one percent. Years six through ten, one point five percent, years eleven through fifteen, two percent, sixteen to twenty plus, two-point-five percent for law enforcement. For employees, I propose, uh, a grand total of, of two percent COLA merit, uh, years one through five, a half a percent, or, or, point five. Six through ten, one percent, eleven through fifteen, one point five, sixteen through twenty plus, two percent. And, whether it's fair or not, but I, you know, I think that we need to, to account for years of service to this county, I think that there should be some recognition for that. Obviously, if they've managed to stay here ten plus years, they're doing something right.
The only thing I'd like to say about that in regard to my employees is that, um, you have to understand the things that they're seeing and dealing with every single day, too, so, they're looking at discovery that nobody else is seeing, right? They're dealing with, um, people who are at their very worst, whether it's a victim or defendant. Their job, I think, is radically different working in my office, for the things that they see and they deal with every single day, than it is for other office employees.
So we could possibly move them into the law enforcement?
That would be my request.
Law enforcement's merit scale?
That would be my request, like I said, that, that, and, and they do take, you know, um, they don't take out, they don't take, um, phone calls after hours like we do, but we do ask more of them, right? If there's, in, in the courts, if you've got hard deadlines, you've got things that have to get done, you've got law licenses on the line, they are very responsible for making sure that things are.
And do you have, you have actually, you have some educational requirements, do you have paralegals? Are they, are they paralegals?
Legal secretaries, but, uh, I can tell you that that job is not fit for anyone, for everyone, um, and it does take not specialized training through school, but, you know, specialized training in the office, so, you have to have a, a good working knowledge of what the court system is, what the things mean, what you're doing, so.
And I'd be willing to move those folks into that category, if there's some agreement in, from this board.
So, I, I actually have a question, so like, I, I think by completely separating out the state's attorneys and law enforcement and saying you have these specialized things, then you're saying that your other departments, who like us, we deal with the county, we deal with that stuff, because we're not interested in court, we can't have the same stepping stones? That doesn't.
I mean, the likelihood, I mean, literally, law officers can be shot. I mean, they're, they're, I mean, um, and, and, and the reason for my hire for the state's attorney, like I said, those folks have a specialized degree. Not anybody can get that job, I mean, you have to have a specialized degree, so I put them up on a little bit of a pedestal, I, I will agree, um, law enforcement, I am trying to.
But Amanda just said her office staff doesn't have a specialized degree.
The attorneys sure do.
The attorneys do.
The attorneys, and, and they, uh, I put them at the highest level, I, I, I have, um, just because I, I think there's been concern about being competitive in the marketplace for retaining attorneys and attracting attorneys, um, so, I said, uh, in no way is this in, in stone, Karen, I'd, like I said, I just, like I said, I put a lot of thought into this, and I, and I, and I'm listening to the employees, and, 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 um, I'm, you know, I think that we just, uh, trying to find a path for this county commission to make it much, a, a more uniform process.
I am completely in favor of the commission having a uniform process for when I go to do budgets. Um, the only thing is, is I think that you need to have this process worked out, like, we, I wanna process, absolutely, Paul, and whether it's steps or doing, uh, salary, I, they've done salary surveys in the past, they tried to put together, um, a system where they had steps, and people got mad about the outcome of where their salary was, and they threw the whole thing out after paying for the salary study. And they threw the whole thing out after paying for the salary study. So I, I am completely in favor of us having something like that and developing that. The thing is, is you're kind of running on a time crunch at this point, so to implement that.
So just a quick, quick question and clarifications. I, I think I understand where you're going with this. So if I have an employee, a non-law enforcement employee, and I'm currently making fifty thousand, my salary adjustment is going to be two percent, a thousand dollars. And then if I have seven years worth of service, I am going to get an additional one percent, another five hundred dollars. That is my base salary for the following year. And any future adjustments would be based on the fifty one thousand five hundred, not fifty one thousand plus merit pay of one percent, correct?
What?
Yeah, that's the way we're laying it out.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's not like we've done before where we gave a one-year bump and then that didn't jump into your salary, this is.
Yeah, you shouldn't lose your merit.
Yeah, that's, I just point, clarifying that, because that's what I understood, but I wanted to make sure we're.
Can I ask a question? Go ahead.
Once your merit's there, that's part of your base, that's your base.
Yes.
You've earned it.
Oh, okay. What, we already have a longevity policy in place where people are getting paid based on their length of service. So does that include where you would continue this longevity payment? Being paid on years of service in addition to paying them on years of service here?
Well, I mean, honestly, in my opinion, I mean, the longevity program, I think it's a nice thought, but I think it's, it's not a huge impact. Currently, I mean, well, I mean, it's in there and I, I mean, it's, I don't think it's, it's, it's not such a huge number that but I don't think it makes the, the impact that it probably should or could.
So you're making all of the merit based on years of service? That's not merit pay, that's just years of service?
Well, you could call it what you want. I, I think he's bringing it into discussion, calling it merit pay, but technically, yeah. But your merit may be years of service, years of service pay.
You're right, maybe that's the wrong, merit's the wrong term. Your raises, your raise is based on your years of service.
So is this a yearly thing that you're proposing?
Well, if we could hammer out a good process, I, I would love to be able to, I mean, I'm not trying to, to, to make, get away from the hard work here because this is hard stuff here, you're dealing with people's livelihoods. But at the same time, trying to flesh out some fairness and some structure. Because I think where I find it, I mean, and I was just as much a part of that September seventeenth meeting as anyone. And all over the board we were. And it's like, I, I walked out of it just not feeling that great. I just feel like, it was like, probably I felt like it was the poorest performance of, of my two-year county commission career.
I would hate to call it a merit. We, I don't mind the, the, the years of service and a percentage. I don't want to call it a merit because we have nothing in writing on merit. There's no policy, nothing. So we want to move forward?
Sorry, Bernie, for, this is just.
Oh, I don't be sorry, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Yeah, I know, but.
My, my, my thing is still, when it's blizzarding out and it's a weekend and the road department gets called out and they put their lines out, lives out on the line to get the roads open before the emergency people can get out there. You know, that's not, that's not a normal way of life, so it's, it's seasonal in, in a way, but.
Could we work in potentially into that road budget hazard pay? For those type of incidents?
And it all, that would work for.
But you could, I mean, you could take that almost every department, emergency management, Alana's no longer here.
She's back there.
She's back there.
She's hiding.
Right in somewhere, oh, there she is. You know, in this same situation, if there is some type of, of an emergency, I remember that people were setting up cots in that room just to manning the stations, if, if you will, so.
I mean, I totally agree that law enforcement is up there, state's attorney is up there. You know, so, but how do you step it down to the next, next level?
What's, you know, I know we probably can't answer the question, what's the, there may be some wash here, but what's the cost on this versus the cost of what was adopted on the seventeenth of September? I agree, I think the longevity thing, if you talk to most employees, it's, 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 it's not much.
It's not, it's not a deal breaker.
Throw that into this pool, I'd be fine with that, but I'm, I'm all ears. I'm all ears, yeah.
Like I said, is this going to be a yearly? Thing that, I mean, the longer you stay, your percentage goes up every year?
I think that has merit.
It does have merit, I'm not arguing that point.
It's a lot easier to have somebody you've retained than somebody you've trying to train, right?
Yep.
I guess, I guess going for Commissioner White, you told me there's no policy on the merit. I guess we have an evaluation process, so I guess I'm not really sure.
We do have an evaluation process, but we don't have a scoring process either where at the end of the year, you know, I talked to Joette a little bit about it, too, but the evaluation process, I don't think has been, I don't know how seriously it's been taken until we just started having these discussions. If you have an evaluation process and it doesn't do anything for anybody, it's no good. It's just a waste of time or a waste of piece of paper.
That's why I tried to put into this merit to the issue, that's why we were trying to go ahead with this to show the people that are actually doing an extra special job, they get rewarded for it, too, that's why I brought that forward.
I agree, I'm, I'm totally on board with the merit. You know, it's a good way to look at your, a group in a, in a hole, too, and see the performers and the non-performers, so.
Reflects back onto the department heads, and if you've got somebody in your department that's not.
Because that'd be hard to come up with a score.
Fulfilling their work the way you expect them to work, then you have to talk to them, so I mean, that's part of the, it's a, it's a constant evaluation, not just once a year evaluation. You know, to make sure that employees are staying on line and focused on what they're supposed to be doing.
Because they're like coming up with a merit program or a scoring for there, that would be hard to do, that road department's completely different from the sheriff's department. Every department be different, so I guess.
A little bit more specialized there.
That's why I put it on the department heads, had, you know, to come up with some, there, with who would you felt they was needed.
I was in agreement with you there, too. I mean, initially, which this could potentially make the department jobs head easier, if that's possible.
And, and if we're going to do something on merit, you know, it, it'd be nice to see that those department heads, you know, have actively done some kind of leadership training through, and know how to have crucial conversations with people. And, because it's, it's, it's one thing to be, say, yeah, I want to, I want to move up, but then there's another one. There's times you're going to have to have some crucial conversations with people and they need to happen. So at the end of the year, if you want to, you don't want to give somebody a merit raise because, for example, they didn't show up. You didn't want to utilize them because you have some kind of back and forth disagreement on things. And you want to say, well, I don't think that person needs a merit, well, where's the documentation where that, or of some sort, where this person isn't going to get a merit this year?
Chairman, if I may, so we have been doing the valuation process for three years, I believe, in the sheriff's department. And Commissioner Claris, I very much like your plan. As a taxpayer, I would say get rid of the longevity pay, if this is what you're going to do, put that pot of money back into the county. But we could easily tailor our evaluations that we've been doing. So the, as an example, the zero to five, your employee is eligible for a one percent raise. We could also build that into our point system that we have an evaluation, so you hit this number, you're, get point five percent of that one percent. Seven, point seven five, one percent. Maybe have three different points there of hitting that to get the full raise. I'm just, I guess I just wanted to share, out of our evaluation process, which I work, I think is working quite well, this system would jive with that.
And that's yearly evaluation?
Correct.
Do you do mid-year review with anybody?
Well, we're constantly, obviously, evaluating what we do and trying to build off of last year's evaluation, yes.
One thing that I wanted to add that I tried to bring in was the market scales, too. We have not any discussions about markets, so if, that what happens is if you give somebody, like attorneys, if you agree to give them five percent every year, I mean, at some point, you either have to have a cap or, I mean, you just, there just has to be some point where they aren't being paid market wages anymore. And that's for every position in this county.
Well, is your plan to do this annually at five percent annually? Two percent, I thought that was a one-year shot.
No, no.
Next year, all we're going to do is fill in the blanks, makes it easier.
I think that, no, I, I mean, once again, a great question. Trying to get us out of a box for this year, be a start. Right? And I think that that could be each year, those levels could be evaluated and set. But I think by doing this, we've kind of created a scale of sorts, and we're prioritizing law enforcement. And, and whether that's well thought out or not, Karen, I, I agree, I, I, I hear you on, on your points. But it's just, like I said.
Yeah, and I think part of the discussion that we've talked about, and, and I, I like information in front of me, but it's not always all encompassing. So when I see the employee survey and the employee salary and we say, you know, you're at the fiftieth percentile or the seventieth percentile, that takes not, does not take into account what our retirement plan is. We have the best retirement plan of any county. We may be equal, but no one supersedes us on, on benefits. The insurance, what we do for our insurance, for our singles and our family policies is as good as any out there. So if we're going to look at the entire package and we're only focused on wages, then I, I, you know, I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, 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 that is different, and so.
Good points.
Well, it, it just is.
I'm glad you brought, yes, absolutely.
I mean, you look, look at the line for insurance this year, somewhere in here, Karen gave it to me, but we're like at eight hundred thousand dollars for insurance expense, right?
For the general fund.
For the general, just, just for the general employees, yeah.
Road or weed or.
Yeah, so. That's a twenty-three percent increase or something, does that mean?
Yeah, I under budgeted last year. I, I'm, I'm going to wind up being over on that line this year, for twenty twenty-four. In twenty twenty-three, when I did the twenty twenty-four budget, it wound up being short. It's going to wind up being short.
What, do we have guidance on what insurance, Joette?
Give you a little bit of an update. So Blue Cross went to the insurance commissioner and they approved a nine percent, nine point one percent increase overall for all of their large group plans. So when we heard that information, we actually went out for some RFPs. We've gotten a few back. Sanford came back and they're actually very competitive, so that's an option. Blue Cross, we're going to see if they can meet that. And we're waiting for United Health is the other RFP. So I think what I've seen so far that we could probably stay even and not have an increase this year.
Do you give Blue Cross, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield other competitors numbers that they give you, or do you ask them to come down in pricing if they can match a certain price or?
Yes, that's what we're doing right now, because they're, they're first, so the minimum is nine percent. And then they came with almost a sixteen, yeah, it was more than sixteen percent increase for us this year. So we're asking them if they can be more competitive, but I don't know.
How does that conversation, just ask them to?
The, actually, our insurance broker, where they go out and they request the RFPs and they say, you're not competitive.
Okay. And then second, while you're up here, to where you're getting the percentage on wage scales? And you're pulling that up, I've had, been a part of a couple of discussions and, and some others that maybe the numbers that you've put, put on here is not correct.
The salary ranges?
Yeah, for the, yeah, the wage scales, yeah.
Yeah, so how, how I do that, I mean, it's not a perfect science, obviously, is I try to make our fiftieth percentile as close to the average wage rate as possible to that position. And this year I used both the, the North Dakota Association's salary wage survey. And I also went out to job service and got their information, too, and provided those averages. And I have all the data. We always have outliers, you always have people that are paid really low or they're not a full-time position. So you try and gauge it on the hours that they give you, because I break it down into an hourly pay rate. So you're comparing apples to apples, because salaries you can't, can't compare.
Okay.
There's some that are paid really high. But there again, you don't know if you're comparing apples to apples because maybe they have other things that they're doing. Their scope is bigger than that job.
Okay.
What, what is deductible on our medical?
Right now, it's five hundred for a single.
For the year? It's pretty good.
And fifteen hundred for families?
Family, yeah, mm-hmm. So there's always things you can do there, too.
I don't want, Chairman, may I? I don't want to get off topic too much, but since we're talking about benefits and I thrive on retention in my department, that is one of the big things when I've been having one-on-ones with my employees the past month here. You know, yeah, one of the sergeants, yeah, get a raise, then the insurance goes up and I don't even, I don't even see that raise for my family. And I think Neil, maybe now is the time to discuss what we talked about. You know, with five years, basically, almost a carbon copy of what you're doing here, Paul, but with benefits, five years in, county picks up another five percent, ten years in, they pick up another five percent of the family plan. Again, a retention piece with some longevity there. If people are sticking around, they deserve the benefits of eventually that hundred percent health insurance.
And currently, we pay, what, is it eighty percent for family?
Correct.
Correct?
I, I've seen organizations do that, too, for retention purposes, to keep people after, you know, ten years, they'll pay fifty percent of it after twenty years, it's a hundred percent of.
And if, if the insurance component is critical, maybe sometimes it's more important than the wage component.
Yep.
The insurance component, we could do that, I think, and not have a significant hit on a total package or total cost of employees. But, so I'm, I'm open for discussion, but I, I've, I've give the sheriff credit when he brought it to us, that, that's one way of doing it. But again, to me, it's got to be part of the total package of the compensation and not niche, niche each one, so.
So just for time and everything purposes, I am completely on board with getting some sort of, something together where we can expect to know what's coming budget time. I feel like it's always a lot of tension during budget time with salaries, whether it's salaries, benefits. If we can have a working group to work on that, to get a plan in place for that. And I'm not trying to bust anybody's bubbles, but we got like a couple of days where this has to be approved and I'm not doing it in a couple of days. So I, I appreciate the commission, but like, we are in the middle of absentee voting, presidential election and everything else. Like I cannot completely redo this entire budget in three days. So, no. So I just need you to think about that a little bit before you go change every single line item in the budget.
Not everyone.
What's, your, your, yeah, your deadline is soon and officially, it's what, the tenth or what is it?
I want to say it's the tenth. To have it fully approved, done.
So I, I would make a recommendation that we take the insurance component of this and let's get that established by January first for following years. So let, let's focus on the wages now, you know, the, whether it is what we adopted on the seventeenth, whether it's the Paul's suggestion or whatever, or something different than that. Let's get that done so that we we know where we're at so that we can finalize this budget, because, and, and just, you know, if you look at Karen's numbers, the general fund, we're going to be underwater based on what we adopted on the seventeenth of September, we're down about two eighty-four, two hundred eighty-four thousand. Based on pretty conservative numbers, I would say, and kudos to Karen for not making it look anything different than that. And then the non-general departments, if I did do my math correct, were probably somewhere, and each of those, a lot of those have their own reserves, but collectively, if we take the non-general fund departments, we're down about two point.
Seven or something.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, somewhere between two, five and three million, so.
I think most of the gen, most of the non-general departments. I think most of the non-general departments, their expenses are less than their than their revenues. You know, they're pretty even except for county jail is one, where the expenses are more than the revenue coming in. There is a balance, but that will have to be addressed eventually. And then road with their upcoming projects, they do have a balance that they're bringing into the year.
Yeah, some of them are intentional, for example, the county agent, you know, we have a large reserve. We've made a conscious decision to operate off of that reserve and not levy for that. The VSO, same way, large reserve, we can continue to do that for a couple of years before we have to address that, so. But yeah, the road is the big one, but I think we were in, pretty much in alignment and agreement when we walked out of there on the 17th on the projects and stuff and we would be just based on what.
Yeah, Al, so.
We're gonna pull about 2 million off the reserve, on his reserve.
Al, I did change your line under and changed it. Excuse me, under contractors, you had it at four. I changed it to 2,105 to cover the ones that they approved off your list.
Right, that's what we said at the last meeting.
Okay, I just wanna let you know if it's reflected a little bit.
I'm good at that.
Differently.
Any other discussion? There's no other discussion? We gotta move forward to the, any motion?
Give me those three numbers again on the 2%. 1 to 5 is 0.5, 6 to 10?
1%. 11 to 15, 1.5, 16 to 20, 2%. And I did just do some quick math for department heads. Commissioner Messer asked how we would treat them differently or if they were, or where they would lie in this whole thing. So I have the 2% COLA for department heads and then the 1 to 5, 1 to 5 at 0.75, 6 to 10, 1.25, 11 to 15, 1.75 and 16 to 20 plus 2.25.
So the department heads are a little different formula.
Yeah, a little different formula.
Repeat that for me?
Yeah, department heads, 1 to 5, 0.75.
6 to 10.
6 to 10, 1.25, 11 to 15, 1.75, 16 to 20 plus 2.25, which would give them, they would be in that next tier at grand total compensation would be 4.25% with the COLA. Law enforcement or sheriff's office would be at a grand total of 2.2 and a half or 4 and a half, sorry, and state's attorney stuck at 5.
Is that your motion?
Uh, no.
I.
And I just did some quick math on the department heads. Is the 1 to 5, the 0.75, is that fair? That could be 1 easily. Like I said, I know I'm probably not making any friends with this whole proposal, but like I said, just trying to figure out a path. A good path for us.
So, and we've gotta start somewhere. I mean, like we discussed our last performance last week. But I do believe that we need to have something in place by January, something other than this that so we can for next year's, or not next year, I'm sorry, 2026, that it makes it a lot easier on the commission.
And the employees.
And the employees, I mean, everybody involved. I think, I think one thing that this, the current program that we've got is creating some division amongst the employees, which is never good. And there's always a natural, some sort of natural division anyway amongst employees. But I don't like to see what's going on and how people feel about this. Like I said, I, I'm not trying to be overly soft cuz I don't think anyone would ever accuse me of being overly soft. But I'm, I just wanna make sure that the employees feel like they're being valued and they're being treated fairly.
So I'd make the motion to approve Paul's department heads on his plan and that was the 1 to 5, 0.75?
I would move that to 1%.
Okay.
I'd be good with that.
1%, 6 to 10, 1.25?
Yep.
11 to 15, 1.75? And 6 to 20?
16 to 20, 2.25%.
16 to 20, 16, 2.25%.
And this is just. In addition to the 2%?
In addition to the 2%.
COLA, yes.
This is just for department heads?
This, yes, department heads.
What if you're there more than 20 years?
Yeah.
You've been maxed out?
So then you just say from whatever and up, you wouldn't cap it at 20 years then?
So the only question I wanna ask on this is what are we doing with the longevity? Are we doing away with that and taking those monies and dumping it into the quote-unquote new plan? I don't know. I should look if, you know, if there's any adverse effect to anybody in the system. That would not be a good situation where you've built longevity for a number of years and I know it's a very small number.
Yeah, some is like $180, $318, 430. I mean, what?
Can I ask if you're planning on, I mean, if you do that though, you'd pay out everyone's longevity up to?
Up to this point.
To this point, I mean, you'd have to, yeah.
Through 2024 and then the 2025 budget is this.
But then is this a one-year fix and then we're gonna go look at this other thing here or what's going on?
I think that would be, I mean, let's, obviously, we have to get through this.
I don't know.
And I like the idea, you know, we have to get this budget done. Between now and the end of the year.
Have to have this budget done now?
Yeah, I mean, flesh it out and budget season doesn't come until next May, June. I mean, surely we can, you know, have a really solid, solid plan. And it may look a lot different than this, but some kind of guidelines, we walk in here, like I said, it'll take some of the uncertainty out of the commissioner's job and some uncertainty of the employees. Everybody walking around on eggshells, not knowing where they're at and how they're gonna, how it's gonna go for them. I think that, I think we can eliminate some of that business and keep some sort of unity in this building if possible.
So. Go ahead, Bernie.
Well, we do have a motion on this part, so we don't have a second yet, though.
This, okay, so you have a department head motion?
Correct.
I would second it.
And so this just involves department heads for one year until we hash out this other?
Yep.
Thing with Cory brought up.
For the 2024 budget.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And this has nothing to do with the longevity part? This is just for this?
And we can continue on with that as we go here.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Sure, what's I? Now, what about the rest?
I would move that the state's attorney, the three lawyers and the state's attorney receive a 5% raise. And the employees in that office would be, get the 2% COLA. And what did we talk about? 2%? Or they would be based on their years of service. Are we gonna do that?
For who?
For the state's attorney's office?
Well, you talked about putting them in the same category as.
Same category as law enforcement for, yeah, so max is 2% or 2.5% and with those years of service, 0 to 5, 1%, 6 to 10, 1.5, 11 to 15, 2.0, 16 to 20, 2.5.
Anything for hazard pay or anything then? That's totally separate thing or?
We have a motion, so I'll wait for a second.
Can I clarify that motion? Is that just for the three attorneys or is it for the attorneys and their staff?
Okay, the three attorneys, 5%, no COLA, okay? The employees in that office, 2% COLA and. Did I say 2 point, okay, and 2% merit, that's the wrong term again, the 2% raise on those. So that would be 1, 1.5, 1 to 5, a half percent, 6 to 10, 1%, 11 to 15, 1.5, 16 and up, 2%.
But that was different from what you just said.
I know it was.
You.
I just amended my motion as I went here. I know I was, I would put him in that law enforcement category, but I think.
The 1, 1.5, the 2 and the 2.5.
Yeah.
So what, so what are you asking? What do you?
I'm suggesting 2% COLA and a maximum of a 2% raise in your office for your employees.
I mean, I just wanna reiterate again that they see things that most people in the public aren't going to be seeing and they deal with a lot of things and that most public, people in the public and offices won't be seeing. The last time I tried to hire for that job, for a legal assistant job, I had three applicants and by the time that I was able to interview, we had one left, so. They are incredible up there. They make sure deadlines are met. They deal with judges, defendants, victims, things that the public and other employees aren't ever going to see, hopefully. So that's my.
Okay, so, and you're putting them at, your, your motion is at 0 to 5, 1, 6 to 10, 1.5, 11 to 15, 2.0?
That was my original motion.
That was your original motion, what's?
And I amended it mid-motion here, so, yeah.
I haven't written it down yet.
I guess it's gonna come up to a vote here, but yeah, I will, I'll stick with putting their raise in that, in that category of law enforcement at the 2.5 total or max.
We haven't done law enforcement yet, though, have we?
No.
Not yet, not yet. Yes.
These are discussions that we could've had last weekend and this is why we're at where we're at, so.
I struggle with carve-outs on some of this stuff. You know, we use the term equity. I understand the uniqueness and what you're exposed to and those kind of things and. So I'm torn on that, but I just, I, the carve-outs, I struggle with a little bit, so I'm open to other comments.
We don't have a second yet anyways.
No, we don't.
All right, so maybe I should've waited until you did have a second.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second the, the 1, 1.5, 2.0 and 2.5.
You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Nay.
Commissioner Messer?
I don't know.
Please leave it on me. I vote aye. Motion carries. Now we have left.
And we have, we have addressed everybody else, correct?
No, we still need to, law enforcement and other, and all other departments or not departments, but all our employees. So I'd make a motion for a 2% COLA for law enforcement in the same raise scale as the state's attorney's office. Excuse me, no, they're not at the same. They're at the, they're at the, yeah, the law enforcement would be 0 to 5, 1%, 6 to 10, 1.5, 11 to 15, 2%, 16 plus, 2.5%.
Our motion to have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
So this is everybody that's in the sheriff's department payroll?
Well, I suppose we can start carving that out too, cuz they're not all officers.
I mean, there's different, different amounts of risk in this whole?
Yes.
Office.
I like what you're doing here. I appreciate it. I think it's a good thing moving forward. But there again, we've already been doing this evaluation process for three years, doing what you guys have asked me to do ahead of everybody else for the last three years. With that in mind, it's just far easier for us to, if you give me that pot of money, I don't care what it is, in addition to the COLA or however you wanna work it, so we can give our employees what's appropriate based on their evaluations and the structure that we have based.
So you've been given a pot of money every month and you just?
I've been given a pot of money for the last five years.
So, but you had made a comment, Cory, Sheriff Lee, sorry, that for instance, a person with 1 to 5 years experience, they would be eligible for a 1% and based on your evaluation, you could either give them the full 1% or 0.75 or 0.5, right?
Correct. I guess part of the hiccup we have is in doing it like this is we have, so I have two office gals that would be going up to their office specialist 3 position, which maxes them out. They're done. Other than if the county were to get a big raise, then they would get something maybe a little bit more significant, but after this point, they're just basically getting COLA raises here on out. So we've kind of started on the bottom end with that and we're trying to expand our accordion a little bit, so to speak. So doing it this way certainly helps us expand our accordion the way you are talking about doing it in the future, but I do have some hiccups this year and if I can't happen this year, it can't happen this year, but.
And I just wanted to add that they could actually do it on merit pay like you had originally talked about per their performance because we have been scoring their evaluations. So we've added that to theirs, so they could easily do merit pay instead of tied to years of service because generally people don't stay in law enforcement as long as maybe someone in not as a dangerous of job too.
Technically, we have, we have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second, yeah. Any other discussion?
So then your recommendation, Sheriff Lee, is to just leave things as it was with you?
Yeah, either that or just tell me what that percentage is going to be and I'll rework it again and I'll figure it out, but. You know, either way, it's up to you guys.
What you're saying is you're, you're already calculating years of service into your merit pay increases.
I am not.
You are not.
Years of service.
Strictly performance.
For the office staff, the office staff, the four girls in front have, if they have five years in, they get office specialist 2, five years and exemplary evaluation, 10 years, office specialist 3, that's the end, that's topped out. Everything else in our department's based on rank, obviously, corporal, sergeant, lieutenant. Which typically comes with time in, obviously.
And you've had that structure in place, right?
Correct.
For three years.
For six years.
Six years. And a grading-based performance review?
Performance review, yes, also. So typically in law enforcement, I guess where the hiccup is here, typically in law enforcement, obviously, your big raises come with your promotion and rank or like I said, in their case, the office specialist positions.
Reflex, reflex, merit pay.
Right, so a little bit more than time in, so to speak, so.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
No.
Commissioner Messer?
No.
And what I, motion carries.
I just thought if you're comfortable with the way it is, there's no reason to change it, but the vote is over.
So now the rest of the employees.
Now my question comes back to, is there anything we can do for the road department when they're out at two o'clock in the morning, opening roads for ambulances to get out somewheres in the country? Risking their, their lives at that point?
Have we taken care of all non-department head employees in this?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So let, let's do that, and then.
Okay.
Move to your discussion.
Do we have the, the non-department head percentages that we approved last meeting? The percentages?
It's one point five plus one point five.
Is that what we did?
Mostly.
Mostly.
And I had all your buckets on every sheet.
Chairman, can I get one, uh, spot of clarification, please, here? Are we talking about time in law enforcement, or are we talking about time with the county?
Colony of the, it'd be a colony, right?
Yeah, that, that, that was my intention, was service to this county, okay? One point five. Guess we need another motion for the, the, the actual employees, okay, so I would make a motion that the employees receive a two percent COLA, and have a raise structure as follows, years one to five, point five, years six through ten, one percent, years eleven through fifteen, one point five, sixteen years plus two percent.
Have a motion to have a second.
I would second that.
Have a second, any other discussion? Roll call vote then, Commissioner Clers.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
No.
Commissioner Masser.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Any else we need to do with it? Got everything covered?
So, I have a question per specific to my budget, so I'm proposed, and you guys accepted in the preliminary meeting, the department head budget that I put forward. Now you're talking about changing all of the raises, and so, I am not going to necessarily, like, put all of this on my staff, they're willing to take it on if you're willing to pay them appropriately, but if you're not, I will need to hire an accounts payable person. And so, that's where I am at, budget-wise. So I want to know what the commission would like to do, as far as the proposed 2025 budget, or if they would like me to go with what dollar amount for 2025? Because if you're changing all my salary lines, that is proposed, that's with the fact that I took out a job position, and I also lowered my budget significantly from 2024, and I need to know what you would like me to do with that.
So we eliminated two, or one, one accounts payable position, and one accounts receivable position?
Yes, and then I hired an administrative, administrative assistant, and we divided up the job duties between the rest of us, contingent on that I was going to be able to compensate appropriately for that, if I was under my bottom. I was bringing my budget down. But if I, if I can't compensate appropriately for that, then I'll need an accounts payable person added back in there. Which will bring my budget back up considerably, from what I proposed.
And what do you propose that position to be at roughly, if you were guessing today?
An accounts payable person?
Yep.
Um, probably in that sixty-ish thousand dollar range.
Plus benefits.
Plus benefits, yep.
I'm just doing some quick math here, so.
Just some history on that auditor's office, too, it, we talked first, talked about, we didn't bump her, I know we had a one, because she was an interim, and then we also went, because she was a newly auditor, so I mean, there's some compensation probably talked about in the past week overlooked.
Well, just quick math, if you add the accounts payable position at sixty-two-ish, or whatever, that would take, um, that, that would take you up just shy of, uh, three fifty-five gross va- or gross payroll, right? Versus what you proposed, which was, um, with four positions that are there, around three, three hundred, I believe.
Eighteen, wasn't it?
Uh, three eighteen is the total with all my line items.
Yeah.
He's just looking at salary. Yeah. I, I just don't want to expect, I, I did this in lieu of thinking that I was going to be able to compensate, and I don't want to expect Lana to continue to be juggling multiple things, or myself, or Pam, and then, oh, you're gonna do it for free. Like, there's no compensation, and then you base it on years of service, and it's like, well, I, we took on these extra job responsibilities, we took it on and have only been in the office since 2021. But there's people who are here for fifteen years, and.
But I think.
I've never taken anything.
Some of the stuff that we saw, that, that proposed increase was a nine point four percent increase this year for that position, that you put in there.
For which position?
For, uh, Lana this year, right?
Yes.
That was a nine point four percent increase, or nine point four-three percent, so nine and a half. And then, uh, and you're stating that you reduced staff, and, and hired one on, on as a lesser rate?
As an admin assistant.
To bring up the salary of another individual, is that?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying that I reduced staff, and hired on an admin assistant to do admin assistant things, and then took on those additional job duties and spread them out between Lana, myself, and Pam.
Who was doing payroll before that?
Lana was doing payroll before.
Yes.
Yep.
And the, the, I don't, I don't know what was, responsibilities were spread out.
She took on, Lana took on accounts payable, and it was covered by.
Right now Lana is doing accounts payable.
But before Lana was doing, you were doing it?
No, Sherry was doing it.
Sherry's doing it, okay.
This call has five minutes left until its maximum duration is reached. Please enter your password or moderator access code. The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
So a question to the full commission, are there any other departments that have, um, reduced staff, and taken that workload across other, because, again, I'm, I'm against these carve-outs. I, I would agree, I think I made the comment before, I think your office has stepped up recently very much. But I'm against these car- carve-outs in conception, because what happens if twelve or eighteen months from now, you said, you know what? Everybody's overloaded, everybody's overworked, I do need the additional fourth person in the room. Everybody's gonna forget that we potentially upped the compensation above the rest of it, right? I mean, that, that's, that's just natural. And so, uh, so a question, is there any other departments that have reduced staff and spread the workload outs amongst the rest of the staff?
I know that, starting next year in January, once, um, Norma retires, Kim's recorder's office is kind of doing a similar situation with that. They're just taking on that workload.
Can someone take on payroll and then submit it to you for approval? Is that? Do the payroll, and then some, I'm sorry, just a little close, and then submit it to you for?
So we're gonna pay somebody else to do payroll?
It'll lighten up the load a little bit.
And who would you suggest does payroll?
I have no idea yet. I'm, I'm asking you a question, is, is, can somebody do that?
But why would you pay them a whole nother amount to do payroll, when it's already being done in my office, and I'm asking for a significantly less amount of money to cover all of that?
It's not uncommon to be, payroll be outsourced, but I get it, I mean, right, uh, Corey is, is bringing up a valid conversation, but I, I, I do think it should stay in-house, yeah, right?
What would the job description be for this person?
For, I, if you have to add in another salary line to my, to my budget, it would have to be, um, accounts payable.
Accounts payable.
It would be a, it would be a full, a, a full nother accounts payable position, yeah.
That'd be full-time?
Well, yeah, you're not gonna get somebody half-time for accounts payable.
Question I have to ask.
It's just hard for me to justify bringing in a whole nother employee and paying that salary, paying those benefits, when our office is willing to step up and do it, but we're not willing to step up and do it for, for absolutely nothing, because that's why we prepared this. And every budget season, I come forward, and I'm like, okay, I got it nailed out, we're gonna save money, this is where we're at, and then every single time, there's always a kink to what you're deciding to do, and I just wanna, I have to address this individually, because this is a problem for this budget.
The job load has not changed. The job load has not changed whatsoever, whether you're getting paid, what we proposed, or what, or what we just agreed to as this commission, it has not changed. I mean, no one's working overtime here, right, or you, you can get these jobs done in forty hours.
You're saying that our, our job load hasn't changed from eliminating one, two employees and bring on an admin assistant?
Well, you, okay, your, well, your job load didn't change from last week until today. I, I, I'm fully aware that your job loads have increased.
I spoke to Commissioner Franchuk about doing pay raises sooner, but then said that I would wait until this 2025 budget, because I didn't want to cause controversy. So the, the job load has changed. We're just willing to do it until the end of the year for, for no increased compensation.
There is an increase, right? We just approved one, right?
Not for the difference in the workload that they have from a year ago to today?
I think Lana actually kind of wanted to comment about some of her job stuff, if this came up. Lana, you can make that face, but you said it. And so, I, I would ask that the commission do listen to her, if she has anything she'd like to say about that.
So it's like getting kind of put on spot here, right, like?
It's hard, hard discussions, for sure.
Like, so, and I'm speaking purely from a, an employee of the county perspective here, with your, um, getting paid based on years of service, right? Where's the incentive to do anything outside of show up for work and do just enough to get by? I'm asking you what kind of employees you want with that kind of setup. Corey addressed it, they were doing raises based on their employees' evaluations, based on the job that they do, and you're taking that away and being like, mm, if you've worked here fifteen years and done okay, you get the same kind of raise as someone here three years, but they've worked their butt off and done a good job, so I'm trying to understand the logic of that. I think it's, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not understanding it, maybe you want to clarify that for me, or, maybe you don't have to clarify me, I'm just telling you that. As far as the discussion you've been having with, over my position in particular, you are right, the hours that I'm working haven't necessarily increased unless, I mean, they were increasing potentially now, we're, we're working election, right? That's a one-off thing. So the hours haven't increased, but the job duties have increased, the roles and responsibilities have increased, the, the benefit to the county has increased, like, I'm, I if, if you wanna, if, if you want to take accounts payable back off and hire and put it out to someone, I don't, I don't think that accounts, strictly accounts payable is a full-time position, so we'd have to hire a full-time position, we'd have to find something else for them to do, it's not a full-time position, so, I just don't, don't feel like if anyone, me in particular, if you do extra, that what you're proposing provides any kind of rewards for that, and what's the incentive to do that? I was hired to do payroll, I could still just be doing payroll, not be the deputy auditor, not do accounts payable. With your proposal, I would get paid the same as I would if I took on those duties, right? So like, I'm looking for the thoughts, your thoughts on the incentive to that? I don't know, I'm done rambling now.
I think all valid points. Uh, my question to you, and we want, I think we need to reward efficiency, right? Um, I'm all, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. My point is, when you look at it from thirty thousand feet, and you have all these departments now making two percent plus two percent, and all of a sudden, we have one department that's jacked up at whatever the number is, Corey said, seven or eight percent. So how do we justify and defend that? Um, it, like I said, if it was a unique situation, I think there, there's a defense mechanism where we could do that now. If we say, okay, we'll, we'll, uh, concur and, um, adopt what was adopted on the, um, preliminary budget on the seventeenth, then do we ask other departments to come in and say, oh, you know, just Kim come in and say, well, you know, we defended the, or eliminated this position, didn't fill it, does that create a whole new conversation? I, I think there is room here to, um, to change the number, I just, I, I, I need to be bought in at the full, whatever that number is, 7 or 8%, and I'm, I just want to listen to those comments, so.
I'd like to make a comment, I know I deal with Lana on a daily basis because, you know, we're the largest department, we spend money on repairs. If, if it's on a Friday and she needs to get the bills done for the commission meeting, she emails them to me, so I personally think she does a great job taking on both of them with the payroll and, and accounts payable is a big deal. I mean, you go, well, look at your bills you get every month and she gets it all done, so. I, I think she needs to be compensated for that and, and I guess you guys will have to make that decision on, but I think she's probably worth, you know, some extra pay.
Well, in the, in the spirit of trying to move this forward and try to appease everybody, that way you guarantee you also disappoint and PO everybody off. I would move that the auditor salary be set at 95,000, the deputy auditor be set at 81,000, the administrative specialist be set at 70,500 and the administrative assistant be set at the 45,760.
And you're leaving anything in there for an extra person then, or what?
Not, not at this point. I think if, if they were overloaded, they could come to us and we could make a budget adjustment, but at, at this point, you know, that's, that's about a, you know, somewhere between 5 and a half, 6% number, I think.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Can we get some clarification on those numbers again, Neil? What were they? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, the auditor line be at 95,000, the deputy auditor be at 81,000, the administrative wine hole be at 70,500 and the administrative assistant admin position be at 45,760.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Let me ask you for those numbers one more time, Neil, I'm sorry.
Uh, 95, 81, 70,500 and 45,760.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, any other discussion?
Myself don't feel it's compensates for the extra load they're taking on, but we got to make a vote on it, so.
And I understand that, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm trying, trying to
Move things along.
Move things along so that everyone doesn't think that, that the 8% or 7, whatever those numbers were, uh, were excessive, so. I would make the comment, I mean, this is a particularly different situation and Karen, I have to tell you that initially I was 100% in, in favor of how, what you were proposing. We value you and Lana, everybody in that office. Like I said, at things, I, I feel like, one thing is for sure, is the opportunity that you have in your auditor's office with the amount of employees that you have and, and, or that you had and making those decisions to scale it back because you felt like you could take on the need. Once again, I'll use the term equity. Other departments in this, in this county don't have that same opportunity. So it's, it's created an advantage for your office over other, other departments. There, very few other departments have the opportunity to slash a couple of jobs and, and, and absorb their salaries into their own and give themselves raises and take additional job, jobs on. Like I said, and I don't disagree with your thought process at all. I mean, I appreciate the, the, your efforts to try to scale back your budget number and reward your employees. Like I said, I, I go back to this whole equity discussion, it's just like, it, it just, it, it became, it got out of whack for the remainder of the county.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, then, Commissioner Masser.
Um, aye.
Commissioner Claris.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Nay.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Anything else?
I guess I would like to discuss, and I don't know how, how to approach it, but some hazard pay for the road departments out at whatever time in the morning, visiting, leaving their family in their warm beds to make sure somebody
What do you propose?
I don't have a proposal because I just, I mean.
So typically, Al, just to ask you a question here, do you have, I mean, at those times, or those folks are probably timed out for the week, are you paying them overtime right now, or how's it work?
Usually when we have these major snowstorms, we try and position somebody like in the shops, Richardson and stuff. The only problem I really have is, is if somebody goes around the barricades, gets out there, and we've had this a number of years, our guys go out in extreme, can't see their hand in front of their face, they get stuck, so. I, I think we have some type of pay, Lana, like for if they're on fire call pay or something, I think they get time and a half, even if they're not.
They get, is, i- if it's, if the courthouse is closed, like if we're, if, or the, the county's closed for a road emergency, so does, or a weather emergency, the, and the road department gets called in, they get paid time and a half for those hours that they're being called in, or they get some sick, or vacation time adjustment depending on the situation, so there is a policy in place for that already?
Doesn't happen a lot, but it, I mean, we've had situations, so I, I think if we got that time, what, I think we can get it covered. I mean, maybe we need to bring a case by case when it happens to the commission and then deal with it.
Yeah, because there's several different inches and a foot, right? So, and ice and snow, and, you know.
We, we've got a good staff and that's what we try to do, we try to position them in our shops to take care of it, so I thi- I think we can, we can get it covered.
But even when somebody has to leave home to sleep at the shop in case there's an emergency?
They get paid.
Just the ones that want to make sure they're taken care of over there.
And we don't want his, I mean, what you're doing is great, I mean, they don't hesitate, they're good guys and they're taking care of us.
Usually send multiple guys out, so one guy's not by himself, so if one guy gets in trouble, the other guy's there to help. And we've had it, so, but anyway, thank you.
Buddy system is good to have.
Okay, is there anything else? How to look for motion to adjourn?
Hey, can I, I'm, I need clarification again, I apologize, sorry, Commissioner Franchak. Are the, the girls in the front office on the same scale as us, as the sworn officers?
Your proposal is what?
Okay, make your case, I mean, I, I mean, because initially, I mean, we have made some differentiation here, there's no doubt about it, and, um, and, um, I would like to hear.
Well, I mean, certainly Amanda made the, a similar case for her
Yep.
gals, and obviously, uh, our gals deal with just as much, if not more, and I'd, I'd love you to come to 24/7 drug patch day and
It's not nice.
And deal with
So are you asking
And I want to back up, Corey.
Oh, I'm not being, I'm not being rude, I'm just saying, I, I actually would like you guys to come experience 24/7 day, it's, those girls do some dirty gross work and it's, it's, uh, it's a rough job.
I, I would agree with him, I mean, he, they're dealing with individuals who have been court ordered that don't want to be sober necessarily. Um, they have to keep track of all of the people that are coming in because those reports, if they are, if they are using, if they're not showing up, have to come to us. They have to come to, they have to show up for, um, probation hearings and evidentiary hearings to testify and able to prove these things, so they are dealing with the public defendants and things like that as well, so I just, I, I do want to know, want you guys to know that Corey's office is, is dealing with that, too.
And there's not a lot of privacy in there when people are getting strip searched either, so.
So do we need a motion to, like, to put them?
So I thought they were part of the equation, is what I thought.
Yeah, the law enforcement.
Or either, I just wanted to clarify.
My thought that they were part of the equation. So the, the one 1.5 to 2.5. Same.
Up to 2 and a half.
Up to 2.
Up to 2.5.
2.5.
Up to 2.5. Okay.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Imposed, motion carried.